Good afternoon, Hendrick Sardar-Begian here with our monthly Parks and Recreation, Community Services Commission special meeting. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, or on YouTube at youtube.com/myglendale. For all those at home that would like to call in, the phone number is 818-548-4013. Could we get roll call?
Certainly. Commissioners Alkazar is absent. Ara Kellian?
Present.
Calfayan?
Present.
Wolfson?
Here.
Student ex-officio Commissioners Barati?
Here.
And Weimer?
Here.
And President Sardar-Begian?
Present.
The agenda for the February 24, 2025, regular meeting, sorry, special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on or before Friday, February 21st, 2025. Item two, introductions and presentations, at A is introduction of new Commissioner Annette Ara Kellian.
Thank you, President Sardar-Begian, members of the Commission. I would like to introduce and welcome our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Annette Ara Kellian. Commissioner Ara Kellian has been a Glendale resident for 37 years. She graduated from USC School of Pharmacy. She currently works for Kaiser Permanente as the Vice President of Quality and Safety. She's a member of a number of civic organizations, one being a board member for the Verdugo Woodlands West Neighborhood Association, as well as very active in Armenian Relief Society and a number of Armenian youth organizations. With that being said, I welcome Commissioner Ara Kellian and looking forward to working with you in your seat as one of our Commissioners. So I welcome you.
Thank you, Anick.
Welcome.
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 Next item?
Item two be introduction of new or promoted CSP employees.
President Sardar-Begian, members of the Commission, we have one new employee. I'm inviting Judy Velasco, our Workforce Development Administrator, to make the introduction.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to introduce our new caseworker one for the Verdugo Job Center, Edith Gonzalez. Edith is a proud alumni of Cal State Northridge, Gomatadors. She previously worked at Jewish vocational services, providing exceptional service to refugees, and she had a caseload of over 80 clients where she provided not only career counseling, but job coaching, workshops, and mentorships. She is dedicated to serving the public. She just started with us in January and has already hit the ground running, working with clients. She is bilingual in Spanish, so she is working with our Spanish-speaking community as well as individuals looking for work, so we're very happy to have Edith in our team. And just in knowing and talking with her, I know that her passion is assisting clients with barriers to employment. So we're very pleased she's with us, and we look forward to having her for a very long time with the city.
Does anyone want to say anything, Edith?
I'm a little nervous, but thank you. I'm excited to be here and, you know, start this new journey and hopefully continue to grow. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Next item, please.
Next is item three, upcoming council agenda items.
President Sardar-Begian, members of the Commission, on March 11th, Public Works will be taking a report to approve the plans and specifications for the Babe Herman Restaurant renovation project. On March 18th, acceptance of grant funds from US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2024 Continuum of Care Program. Our second item for the 18th, Verdugo Workforce Development Board, request for approval to be America's Job Center of California, Adult Services Dislocated Worker Career Services Provider. Appropriation of 409,000 in rush funds for homeless services for our Rapid Rehousing Program. And our last item for the 18th, no-cost extension to the agreement between City of Glendale, HealthNet, and LA Care under Housing and Homeless Initiative Program, which is our HHIP program from the state of California.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, Commission Staff Comments.
Hi, everybody. This is maybe a little off-topic, but I feel it needs to be brought up. So, according to Pew Center research, there were approximately 3 million federal government employees, amounting to 2% approximately of the total civilian workforce last fall, and I think it's probably safe to estimate there's another 3 or 4 million people who work for the approximately 200,000 companies that contract to the federal government. Additionally, the 2025 to 26 California state budget depends for about a third of its funds from the federal government. And a lot of our Glendale city capital improvement projects and public safety initiatives and our services programs that we are dear to my heart, that we oversee here on the Commission, are funded by various grants, many of them from the state, but we also just heard about federal money and how that plays a role in what we do. And I'm just wondering how concerned we are, or should be, about the potential loss of federal funding over the next two years. Additionally, I'm wondering how prepared we are for potentially disastrous repercussions in the economy in general over things that are happening right now. As a person who worked in municipal finance, I understand how interconnected it all is, and I'm concerned. So I know that you guys may not have any answers, but I felt it was important to raise the question. If anybody wants to speak about it or speak to that question, I'd be grateful.
Sure. President Sardar-Begian, members of the Commission, we receive with all of our programs, just our department, around 10 million in federal funds. That's including about 10 million about homeless services, CDBG, as well as workforce development. We're closely monitoring the situation, but as of now, we're lucky enough that everything is status quo. But we are waiting on the budget to be approved for fiscal year '25, '26. With that being said, we are monitoring it. We don't have any plans yet, but in terms of services, our services are continuing to be operated throughout all of our programs. As we get more information from our federal government and our political electeds, we'll go ahead and report back to Commission on next steps and what actions we'll be taking.
Okay. Thank you for that answer.
Anybody else?
I'd like to actually commend Judy and the Verdugo Hills or Verdugo Job Center. I was fortunate enough to be able to stop by during their last job fair. I believe it was earlier this month, if I'm not mistaken. And I was taken back. I mean, the number of different employers that were there, and more than that, there's definitely a need, not only within, you know, direct borders of the city of Glendale, but outside. And we had, I mean, there was literally a line trying to get people in there. And I got a chance to talk to a few of the people that were there just looking for jobs, and they were very excited that the city of Glendale has kind of opened its doors for them. But also, on my way out, I was able to talk to two different employers, and they were also, you know, very, very happy that, you know, we offer them an opportunity to come in here and recruit. And they just kind of felt that, you know, whenever they're here, they get really, really good results. They get top-notch talent for their, you know, various businesses. So that was amazing. I think if we could just kind of continue pushing, that's an awesome. I wish she was here, for her to hear it, but it was awesome. I hope we continue that.
Next?
Next is item five, oral communications. We don't have any callers or cards. Item six, consent items, at A is approval of the minutes of the Commission's special meeting held on January 27, 2025.
I will move it.
I can second. I second it.
Commissioners Alkazar is absent. Ara Kellian? Will Epstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Calfayan?
Yes.
Wolfson?
I abstain.
And President Sardar-Begian?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll probably have to bring it back on a different month when, let's see. Oh.
No.
Yeah, that's right. Commissioner Beek was here at that time. I'll have to get direction from our legal department and see how we handle that. Thank you.
Put you on the spot.
Fortunately, I can't take a vote. We, yeah, we'll verify with legal, but just because we won't have at least three to vote for it, so. Next is item seven, action items, at A revised entertainment feature policy, previously titled "Party Inflatables Policy." And that one is a motion to approve the revised entertainment feature policy previously titled "Party Inflatables Policy."
Good afternoon, President Sardar-Begian and members of the Commission. I'm Gabrielle Golia, Community Services Manager with the department. And one of the areas that I oversee is our park rentals with the picnic shelters, our community buildings, and general park areas. Back in 2017, we brought an item to the Commission called the "Party Inflatables Policy." This was a policy that was replacing our moon bounce policy. And the long and short of it is that it is a policy that allows us to know what type of bouncers that are automatically approved or not approved for our picnic rentals and rentals in the parks. In the past number of years, both the types of insurance that companies carry, the number of bouncer companies that are available to our renters that meet the city's insurance standards, and the increased standards for insurance for all of these companies have increased. Everything is more broad now. We are getting a lot of requests, additional requests for different types of bouncers than we have gotten in the past. So we are here today to expand upon that policy and allow more bouncers in our parks than we have previously allowed. We were a little conservative before, back in 2017. We were pretty strict that it could only be actual bouncers or obstacle courses where the kids are still bouncing within it. We had really restricted the types of extra features that included, well, let's see, let me open up some of these. We had denied anything that had racetracks, mechanical rides, climbing walls, and zip lines. So what you're looking at right here is our previous policy, so that you can see it. We allowed bounce houses, inflatable slides that were dry only. We didn't allow anything with water. We allowed inflatable combos, so it was like a bounce house and a slide combination, photo booths, bubble balls with special events only, the obstacle courses where the kids are, you know, maybe running within the bouncer. It's kind of like a bounce house combination type thing where they may have to go around, blow up features within it. And then we had interactive games for special events only and movie screens for special events only. What we would like to expand this to is, as you can see, quite a bit more. So automatically eligible for a permit should the park have the big enough space for it and should we not already have the maximum number of allowed permits at that site for the day, we would like to allow bounce houses, inflatable slides, the dry ones again only, inflatable combos, photo booths, bubble ball soccer, obstacle courses. We're adding on Nerf gel, water, foam, archery blaster parties. There's some really fun companies here in LA that provide, they bring out all of the equipment so the kids can have a Nerf blaster party, and then they pick up all of the little darts afterwards. So things like that we're allowing, and then ball pits with a maximum size of 13 feet by 13 feet. We will also allow certain things for special events, and this is where we're actually expanding a little bit more, is that if Director approves it, we'll allow water-related rides. There is some potential turf damage that comes along with water slides because the area underneath the slide does get a little bit torn up. So that'll be a case-by-case basis depending on the park and depending on whether it can withstand that kind of extra abuse. We can allow amusement rides, which could be bumper cars, power wheels, roller coasters, mechanical rides like trains or ride-on animals. Those are like, they're like little kind of bouncy rolling animals that they can ride on, not real animals, and a racetrack. And then along with that, we can allow climbing walls. We have our own climbing walls, so it felt a little restrictive to say, "You can't bring a climbing wall, but we can bring a climbing wall out." And then we'll allow interactive games and movie screens and petting zoos. All of these would be with the Director approval and with the proper insurance, of course. And our risk manager evaluates each of these items on a case-by-case basis to determine the level of insurance that would be needed based on whatever risk there is to the public as part of that rental. We will not be allowing zip lines, single-use water balloons. Those are very, very terrible for our mowers and impossible to pick up. Zorbing, zorbing is a game where the kids or people stand inside an inflatable ball, but their feet don't come out. So they don't have a lot of control over it. They kind of roll around all over the park, but we have concerns about them staying in a safe area because they don't have their feet out. We will, however, allow them to do the soccer games where the inflatable has their feet sticking out because then they're only moving on their own accord. And then foam equipment. So these are the things that we won't be allowing compared to what we are hoping to allow with the new policy, the expanded policy. And I will go back to just show you, these are the park locations that we will, these haven't actually changed very much. We have added on to this the maximum number of entertainment features per park per day. And the reason for that is that some of these parks have multiple picnic sites and have the ability to have a few of the inflatables at the same time, the entertainment features. But we do want to have a limit on it so that a park like Verdugo that has five picnic shelters doesn't end up with like Bouncer City where it's just bouncers everywhere and other people can't utilize the park. So we're trying to find that balance between allowing these renters who want to have an inflatable or an entertaining feature for their children, but also not take the space away too much from the public. So Brand Park, Car Park, Casa Adobe, Central Parks, Ridos, Dunsmore, Emerald Isle, Fremont, Glen Oaks, Glorieta, Griffith Manor, Maple Park, Pacific Park, Palmer, the Shoal Canyon Park and picnic areas, not the ball fields up above, but the picnic areas down below, and Verdugo Park. These are areas that we would allow with a rental. If we do not rent the site for picnics, then it would only be with a special event permit that it would be allowed. If we do rent it for picnics, then we have a designated location for each of these sites where a bouncer or an entertainment feature of some kind could be located. Overall, with this new expanded policy, we really don't see an increase in any revenue. We are already issuing the jumper permits with a $25 application fee. That's all it costs for them to add on a jumper. And it's really an administrative cost for us to verify with the company that they do have insurance, and the companies in our area do know they have to verify with us that they have a permit in order to use, to rent and use it in the park. So we're not really thinking there will be an increase in them. There is potential that we could have some turf damage, as I mentioned, and that will be something we have to evaluate with this expanded policy and work with our maintenance team just to make sure that it's not extensive. And if so, then we may come back and suggest some revisions, but as of right now, we want to give all of these a try. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
I was just wondering, have there been any safety issues or claims that, you know, I know they have insurance, but, you know, people will file a claim against the city anyway, you know how it is. So I'm just wondering if that's been an issue in the past or not.
President Sardar-Begian and members of the Commission, I am aware of a claim that has come in from a private party that had a bouncer. It is always a risk because even a private party may assume that because the city has allowed it, the city is responsible for it. And that is where we will pass that off to our legal department and the claims department, as well as our risk manager who has approved the insurance for these companies. So what I can say from our end is that we require the insurance to be in place from both the renter, if required, and also always the vendor that is providing the bouncers. So we are making sure that that piece is taken care of on our end before we're allowing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad we're adding extra facilities for our residents here. It's a good move to do that. Thank you for thinking about it.
Thank you.
I want to ask, are the laser tags, because I know that's something that's somewhat popular nowadays, is that part of this or is that something completely different where they would pull a different permit for it?
We, laser tag, we haven't had an actual rental request for laser tag. I think mostly because that's usually in a darker time and our parks do close, like the permits don't extend that late unless there's like a lit feature in that park. But I would believe that we would need to check with Anick for Director approval since it's not specifically listed here, but it would fall under the Nerf gel, water, foam, archery activities. Yeah, it's the same companies that do provide those activities.
Thank you. You know, on your, so I'm looking at this list and then your list of parks. Now, there's a list in my park in my community that's not on your list here. The Adobe, I'm Bonita.
Okay.
So I can imagine, you know, probably we don't want a bouncer in that. Is this only for, because if you go back, I mean, there is some of these activities that can happen in that park. Would they not be able to? Would they not be able to?
President Sardar Begian, members of the commission. So I believe you're talking about Verdugo Adobe? Is that the correct one?
Yes, Verdugo Adobe.
I wanted to make sure because we have the Casa Adobe and also Verdugo.
Was that on the, that wasn't on the list, right?
Verdugo Adobe is not on the list. Most of that is because there's, it's not a large enough area without expanding out into the trails and the dirt, the DG, there's not a big, large, flat area that would allow for these. So in order to preserve all of our parks, we worked with our maintenance crew in order to identify the locations that we will allow them with the permit. So that one in particular, we wouldn't. If a customer called and really wanted to have something with a bouncer, we would work with them to find an alternate location where they could have a bouncer feature or an entertainment feature in order to make sure that they get the best of both worlds. They can have their picnic, birthday party, whatever it is, but also have the entertainment feature.
Okay. I don't think they, you're right, a bouncer wouldn't work there, but a movie screen might or some of the others might.
So movie screens along with a special event, that would be something that would be considered on a case-by-case basis. And depending on, and if it were our docents who wanted to have some kind of event there with a special event permit, we certainly would be able to work with our director for approval on various things.
Got it. Thanks.
You mentioned setting limits on, like you mentioned Verdugo Park, how you would have to set limits so it's not bouncer central. Would you, would the city set the limits on how long people can stay there for? Or would you coordinate with the private company or rentals that they're staying with?
Sure. President Sardar Begian, members of the commission. For the number, for the maximum amount of time as well as the maximum number at the park, the city does set that. So for example, at Verdugo Park, we are setting our limit at two inflatable or entertainment features at the park on a daily basis. Each reservation can have up to one for the picnic shelters. So basically that means we would have two features out there for a regular picnic day. The picnic reservations are five hours minimum, and then the customers can stay longer. So we don't actually, once that five hours is up, we won't rent the picnic shelter to anyone else. So they pay for their five hours and if they want to hang out and stay past that original five hours of paid time, they may. There wouldn't be a conflict because we're only issuing one permit per day per picnic area.
This relates with my commissioners' way Mars question. I actually wanted to ask specifically how, how do you guys calculate the maximum number of entertainment features? Because I see Verdugo Park as two and then a smaller park also has two. And I wouldn't want there to be two, more than two parties that wish to rent. And I know Verdugo Park is a bigger park and having that as two, I could see maybe a possible complication in the summer where it's more popular. So is that based on square footage or could you elaborate?
Absolutely. So the number of, the maximum number of allowed entertainment features per park is really set on the amount of space that we have located next to the picnic areas that's safe. So it's not necessarily the size of the park as a whole. It's really more related to the area nearby that picnic shelter so that parents whose children might be going into the entertainment feature and out can see it from their picnic area, their reservation area, while also not spreading out into other potentially reserved locations in the park. So for instance, like a Dunsmore Park, we only allow one, even though Dunsmore Park is really quite big, because we're looking at the area near to the building that's safe and not necessarily allowing that entertainment feature all the way out in the grass on the other side where parents can't keep an eye on their children at the same time as sitting at the tables. So it's kind of a, it's subjective to each site.
And I also wanted to comment that the expansion of more features is great because recently I was actually at Verdugo Park and we had a bubble soccer event with permit. And I saw so many, like other people, they were looking and they were like, you know, they were, it's something that's new. And even we had police pass and they saw it, something that's new. So expanding the more features that could be available will also boost activity in the park, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm moving the motion approving the revised entertainment futures policy.
I will second it.
Okay, I'll take roll call. Commissioners, Alkazar is absent. Our Kellyan?
Is it I? Is that who you take? Okay.
Kafayan?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
President Sardar Begian?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. I think I'm up next, so I may stay.
Next is item eight, reports for information only at IS Recreation and Community Services Section Monthly Activity Report for January 2025.
Hello again. I'm pleased to show you our activities that we had for the month of January, as well as some of our upcoming activities. On January 17th, we did celebrate the volleyball championship for the One Glendale program. The Jefferson Tigers defeated the Cerritos Wildcats in a hard-fought, two-set consolation match. And it really did highlight their season and the growth that the kids had. This was actually scheduled originally for January 10th, but due to the winds and the fires, we did postpone it. And then we did take an opportunity to honor the first responders at the event and thank them for everything that they did to help both Glendale and our neighbors. The LA Regional Food Bank made its monthly visit to the ARC on January 21st and we had 101 meal kits distributed. Unfortunately, due to the extreme winds and fires, we did keep the trails closed in January for the majority of the month, so we didn't have any trails in open space programs. Our Stone Barn Nature Center had 497 guests visit during the 12 days that we were open. That was down. Again, fires and winds and trail closures definitely affected us. We continued to operate the Wander the Wilderness Bus, but we did have to cancel our January Go program, unfortunately. For youth and family services, we did help, they actually helped with the championship event for the One Glendale program on January 17th. On January 24th, they helped inventory jerseys for the upcoming season and they played some basketball billiards and board games. And that was for the basketball season preparation. And then on January 31st, they had a guest speaker and activities with the fire department who shared his journey, firefighter Sebastian Gonzalez, shared his journey from youth participant to military career. And then they also had their social time and games for the evening. The Youth and Family Services Star Students Training as Role Models had a really great kickoff to the new year. On January 7th, they shared holiday memories in their journals and Officer Egeman treated them to In-N-Out burgers. On the 14th, we talked about natural disaster reflections and gratitude with them. They journaled about their feelings during all of the recent natural disasters. And they created thank you cards for the local fire and police. On the 21st, they talked about respect and teamwork. Again, journaling and completing schoolwork before having some activities in that evening. And on the 28th, they did a time capsule. And so they also welcomed our new star officer, Marlene Urquila, with an interactive introduction. Our Club Maple and Maple Inclusive Play Dates took place. Maple Inclusive Play Date happened on January 18th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And the Club Maple Arts and Crafts Activity was on January 23rd from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at Maple Park Community Center. Club Maple Arts and Crafts Night had 84 attendees. And so it was a really popular night with them to foster their artistic expression. Our elderly nutrition program, in January, we served 3,717 congregate meals and 1,456 home-delivered meals. For the Supportive Services Section, they had 524 unduplicated clients. And that, the goal for this is to assist our seniors in maintaining their independence and living on their own. For the upcoming programs, on February 28th, we do have our Teen Night Out program at Pacific Community Center. Same evening, we have Parents Night Out at Pacific Community Center. It'll be a very busy night there. And on the same evening, we have the Unbelievable Honeybee at the Duke Magin Wilderness Park. So people will get to learn about all the wonderful things the honeybees do for us. On March 7th, already we have another championship. So this is our basketball championship. It comes so quickly. This will be at Hoover, Herbert Hoover High School, 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and that's on March 7th. It's very exciting, so we do invite all of you out to come see that event. On March 8th, we will have our monthly Riverwalk Work Day. And we have our Glendale Outdoors Go program on March 8th at the same time. We have our nutrition class, March 14th, at the Adult Recreation Center. So we're going to be talking to our seniors about natural versus artificial sugars. We have a Wilderness Work Day on March 15th at Duke Magin Wilderness Park. And our Wander the Wilderness Bus continues to operate weekly, Saturdays from Pacific Community Center and Sundays from Maple Park. So people can catch a free ride on up to the Duke Magin Wilderness Park, thank you to our Metro grant. Our next Maple Inclusive Day is going to be on March 15th at Maple Park. And I apologize, there is, it's not Maple Inclusive Day on this one. This is our Shosehin Whispering Pines for the Tea House. This is our Japanese garden and tea house. We just accidentally hit a typo, sorry. And this one is on March 16th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Brand Tea House and Gardens. It's a really neat event over there. And then the last thing will be our next Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meeting on March 17th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What's Maple Inclusive Day?
I'm sorry?
What's Maple Inclusive?
President Sardar Begian, members of the commission. This is a play day on our Shane's Inspiration Playground, which is a playground for, it's an all-inclusive playground for anyone with physical extra abilities. And so we have special gathering days once a month out there for everybody to come together and do some arts and crafts activities, play on the playground.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
How do you guys promote these activities and advertise it so that everyone in Glendale is aware of them?
Thank you, yes. We, so all of these activities are in our newsletter that we send out monthly to anyone who has signed up for the newsletter and has registered for our programs. We also put these, as much as possible, unless they come up last minute, they are in our Leisure Guide. We have a calendar on the department, actually the city's webpage, but also the department webpage that links to all of these. And then we also utilize social media. So we do have a department social media accounts for Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, X, not Twitter. We also cross-post with the city. So we try to catch all of our followers, whether they're just parks followers or also citywide followers.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe the ones that involve kids or Teens Night Out, we could send to schools somehow so they can post them. And I know we get counseling newsletters sent to us on a weekly basis. Maybe that could reach a bigger audience.
Yes, thank you. The schools are a bit trickier. We do have to pay for many of our programs. If, so all of our flyers and our newsletters, if they link to anything that charges a fee, which some of these programs do, like Parents Night Out or some of our camp programs, unfortunately, that triggers a pretty hefty fee with the school district. So we do try to strategically work with our open houses and get at least our Leisure Guide out. And we have QR codes that people can scan them and then find our information later. And when we do have truly free programs, such as the Wander the Wilderness Bus, we do try to push those out in the Peach Jar, which is, for those of you that don't have children in the Glendale Unified School District, it is the weekly bulletin that goes out via email to all of the parents. So we can target our programs to various schools, whether it's elementary schools or even neighborhoods versus all the children in Glendale Unified School District. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Next item, please.
Sorry, next on the agenda is item 8B, Park Services Section Monthly Activity Report for December 2024.
Good afternoon, Presidents Sardar Begian and members of the commission. I'm going to present a number of projects today and some of them are a little ahead of December. Just, I wanted to get them in, since they're fresh. We're talking about storm damage. This is just some, this is a very small sample of, there was widespread wind damage from, as we all remember, the strong winds that came in. There was a number of days where the Park Services staff assisted public works and a little bit with GWP to, you know, we all had to work together to help clean up the city. And so we did work with them for a number of days during the storm. And this is just some of the damage we had in parks. That's a sample. This is in Verdugo Park. I don't have any of the pictures from Brand, which was, there was a lot of many, many trees and limbs down and debris everywhere. And the guys did just an amazing job at cleaning it up very quickly and the park looked wonderful when they were done. So this is a sample of the type of thing that we're encountering, lots and lots of trees down forestry couldn't get out to help us with it, so the crews took it on themselves. That's just a small feeder that went down there. And then limbs from the sycamores were going down all over. And this is how they, they were able to get it cleaned up rather quickly. They took a great deal of pride in it, which was very fun to see, that they wanted to get all the leaves off the ground. And that was, they really did heroic work. It was incredible how quickly they worked, in addition to assisting other departments. So hats off to the Park Services crew for all this work. They were very proud of it as well, as you can tell by their pictures. At Babe Herman Little League Field, we did renovations of the infield, which is just going in and fertilizing the turf. They do some aerating of the turf. And then we go, they go through and they were cutting out sod to reshape all the lines, baseball season starting up. And so they go in, they get the fields really pristine. You'll see in a few of these pictures that they just have the fields looking great. That is the infield of Babe Herman Little League Field and that is a mound that was just rebuilt completely to give it the height that was requested by the Little League players. And so they're very happy with this, I believe. And that's the end result of the infield turf area there with the mound cover on it, since it was just redone and it was before rain, so we didn't want it to get damaged. At Griffith Manor Park, we had a number of irrigation-related problems. This is one of, this is Eric Nuneo who's in there. You can see that blue thing on the pipe is a mechanical coupling where we have to, we have pipes that break. They got to go in and put on the mechanical coupling so we can get the water turned on quickly without damage. And you can see it's not really fun working in there because they're up to their knees in mud. I think it stopped working, Iris. Okay, this is after the recent rains. We had a number of drains due to the, with the winds actually affected our drain systems in that we had a number of catch basins that had filled with debris. And this is just a parking lot that was flooded at Griffith Manor. It was about ankle deep, but then we had another one at Central Library that was knee-deep. And so the guys went out and got all these cleared. And so we're in good shape for the next rains because they have everything cleared out now. This is Nibley Park. This is actually, this picture is not at Nibley Park. This is at lot, parking lot number 31, which is Glendale College. This is a delivery of the playground fiberfall, which is the wood chips in the bottom. We replaced the old, meaning we dug out what was there and put in new. And this is how it gets delivered on a walking floor truck. We had it, we have, with a lot of the parks, you see the size of that truck that we have to get them delivered off-site and then we move them in, on-site in smaller trucks. So this is, yeah, see, there's the smaller truck where they're bringing it in. And then they unload on the sides and it gets spread by the crew around. it in. And then they, they unload on the sides and it gets spread by the crew around. That's, we use our ballfield maintenance tools, which is called a bunker rake. But the guys spread it with that, helps kind of speed the process. And that's, and then a lot of hand raking. That's the crew doing the work. There's Eric, Tony. Eric's having a great time, spreading the wood chips. At Montrose Park, here again, we rebuilt the pitching mound. So I think this is going to be great for Little League. They requested the height and of it. So we worked with them on that because there was some question. And then at the same time, the, the bases and the pitching rubber itself get realigned to make sure they're exactly up to the ballfield standards. And so this is the process that they go in and redo it. And there's what it looks like when it is done. And then at the Sports Complex, they were, this is the grooming of the artificial turf field, number one, the baseball field. And so they go out with their groomer, which is also a vacuum. It evenly spreads the infill material and then picks up any loose material that might be out there. Field looks great when they're done with it. That's just the pictures of it right there. So it looks brand new when they're done. It's really good. And it extends the life of the artificial turf field. At Pacific Park, this is a concrete form for a bench that was going in. And just a couple pictures here, that was them building the form. This is after the concrete had been poured, and that was right during the pour, right there. So I don't have any pictures of the guys working other than the one, but that's the process for pouring the concrete there. And that is it for this week. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you. We are at the end of our meeting today. German is at 3:23 p.m. Thank you, everybody.